A special meeting of the Board of Education to order and can we start with the pledge? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, thanks to everybody for coming, I appreciate it. So, I, Greg, welcome.
Thank you.
To your, we had a special meeting just for you.
I appreciate it.
We will do a more formal introduction at our March meeting, but I understand there's been some frustration by some because we're revisiting this issue. But in order to be an effective board, I really think that we can't be rigid and we really have to be amenable to changes that are happening. You only have to look around the table to see that the composition of our board has changed since the time that we voted. And as situations evolve, I would hope that we would have enough flexibility to at least open the door to a discussion and even change our position as a collective if it's necessary. It's a fact that on our meeting on January 23rd, the board made a very difficult decision to delay funding for ESS at the upper middle school for the next year. For those who don't know, ESS is a state-of-the-art mental health program and related services for students with significant emotional and behavioral problems that might be impacting their education, putting them at risk for out-of-district placement. It's also a fact that, sorry, it's also a fact that two days after the vote on January 23rd, we were informed that Our Lady of Mercy would be closing. And because of that closure, the town would realize a savings of approximately $130,000 in next year's budget. So, I felt like it was important to come back and revisit that, given that it was such a difficult decision on the face. As a board, we've always been united in seeing the value and the worth of this program at the high school and unified in our view that it would be a valuable asset at the upper middle school. Not only for the important mental health services it provides, but also because it enables our district to keep these kids in Madison, as we have already seen in the high school program. And it ultimately saves the district money. There's another piece of the landscape that has changed in the last week. Last week was a national tragedy and I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the fact that, for me, that is a piece of, you know, how things have changed and thinking, not all of it, obviously, but certainly it's part of who I am. So, I am going to make a motion to propose something, then we can discuss it. Do you still have the motion? Did you get that?
Yes.
Sorry. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Thank you. On the phone is Happy Marino and Emily Rosenthal, which makes us all of us, right? Yes. All nine of us are here. So, I hereby move that the Board of Education request that the Town of Madison's Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen create and commit to an assignment of $120,000 from the undesignated fund balance, which amount shall be assigned to the Board of Education for the purpose of funding during the 2018-2019 budget year, the Effective School Solutions Program, providing the Board of Education first utilize unspent funds at the end of the fiscal year 2017-2018 to return the same amount, $120,000, to the town. I further move to authorize the Board Chair in conjunction with the Superintendent of Schools and/or the Director of Special Education to draft and submit such a request to the Board of Finance and Selectmen specifying therein the purpose and parameters of this proposed appropriation. So, that is the motion.
Second.
And as second, discussion.
All right. Well, I would like to say that...
This is, it's Galen speaking.
Sorry, I'm sorry, Galen is speaking.
Yeah. So, I have a few questions. The first is that, what is the new information exactly? OLM and what else?
The OLM, the composition of our board, as well as national events changing in the climate.
Those three things. Okay.
And the undesigned.
Well, that's, okay.
But that's, yeah.
So, the argument is that those are all new things after the budget vote. Okay. I think we all support safe environment, mental health for our students. And I would like to say that the benefits will be provided to any student who needs it. So, on the benefit side, it will be there. It's really a question of the cost. So, in the cost-benefit analysis, it's about the funding and the potential amount, right? And so, I would view ESS as an insurance premium that you would pay for a one-year insurance premium until it's in the budget. But I do have some significant concerns. The first is that the world changes all the time and tragedies occur. And we have to follow process and we can't continually reopen issues. And so, I think as a matter of policy, it sets a very bad precedent to change the decision of our board. And so, if we go through with this, I would really, really like to stress that this should be special, one-time, non-president sending request. So, that's, those are my first two points. One is that we all support the benefits of the ESS program. It's a question of timing, it's a question of cost and source of funding. I'd also like to stress that it's not a good way to, well, it's a less than optimal way to make decisions. So, my second concern is, we can make the request to the town, but ultimately, we can't dictate terms about the source of this, right? I mean, we can't say, please take it from the undesignated balance or please take it from this. We can just make a request. Is that correct? Did I understand you?
Okay.
The third question I have is, is this money for ESS for Pulse, is this purely for healing or is this for prevention? So, what's, so, in other words, if, if the, if we agree on the general benefits of this, right? But if you reference the shooting in Florida, is this intended to mitigate the trauma or is it intended for prevention?
Both.
Both.
I think there's a correlation between mental health and, I mean, that's what's so heavy in the media right now about mental health services and the lack thereof contributing to such tragedies. And just in terms of responsiveness, I think you can look at it both ways, as going in and changing process, or you can look at it as responding to something similar to how we responded to Sandy Hook after that happened, around the same time period where there was some...
But is the driving force OLM with the shooting?
Well, as I said in my opening remarks, there are three contributing factors to bringing us all back together. Yeah.
May I make a point? I hear your concerns, Galen, and I'm in complete support of what you're saying. I do think that we are all here believing the same thing, that we are in complete support of an effective school solutions. I think where the funds come from matters more at this point, and that should be really our focus. The budget, we voted, it went through. One of the concerns I have, and I did want to speak of the safety issue that you were referring to, my understanding is that the budget did incorporate SRO, the Resource Officer for the two campuses. So, and we have some very brave teachers that develop relationships with their students, therefore are accessing their counseling staff and perhaps even proactively reacting in the buildings. And the SRO, just by nature of having an officer's car available on campus, should help with that, the national tragedy that you speak of. I don't see where the effective school solution would necessarily, I mean, it certainly provides the relationships that we want with personnel, and I think we all are in support of social emotional well-being equally to that of academic achievement. My concern is, and I have to echo what Galen was saying, I'm not, I don't, this is my first year and I'm big on process and my understanding is that, you know, that's the way it is, that's the way it is. However, I have some flexibility and I would propose that we go back to the budget instead of, you know, counting on whatever other outside funds and say, what can you delete, remove, reduce, so that we can make up for this 130, whatever the sum is, for this coming year? And then in the previous, or the following budgets, then let's incorporate it. But because the budget has already been voted on, and I think it's a really important precedent that we set as a team of people sitting here, that we consider other options. And the other options could be, and this would be for you, Tom, is to present some options where you suppose the money can come from. Of course, we don't want to touch the building facility and the maintenance things because that was one of our tasked items when the referendum didn't pass. But if there is something that you can reduce, remove, swap, whatever it takes, by all means, I think that it would be a fair compromise without, and I'm not even sure how Our Lady's surplus funds even come into this formula. My understanding is it becomes the town's budget, not our budget, but working with the budget that we approved, if that's something possible. I'd like to see us work more in that direction because I think we're all stand, or sitting here with the same beliefs that absolutely social-emotional development for our junior highs are equal, equally as important as what we have at the high school.
So, I think because you, I think, Tom, I need you to respond to some of the specifics, but Happy only has a half an hour, so I want to be mindful of that and give her, okay. Happy? Are you still there?
I just have three quick things. I wanted to clarify a few things. So, it's a question of clarity, actually. I'll get to that last. The first thing is, there was an article in our paper, I think last Thursday, that said OLM is not a done deal and that they would know by the end of March. So, I would be concerned if we asked for that money, but I don't think we are based on what your motion says.
Correct.
Okay, so that's not an issue. So, my second...
That just brought us to the table.
...concern is, okay, my second concern is that I think it is a dangerous precedent for us to ask the town for town money at any time. It would be the equivalent of the Board of Selectmen saying, could you please give us the money for the ESS program for our new roads? So, we want to keep those two things separate. But again, I think it's based on your motion, it's coming out of our budget, right?
Yes.
For this year.
Yes.
So, the provided by clause, I'm sorry, I can't, I didn't see the motion, but that means that we're not going to get the appropriation unless we have the money well-stocked at the end of the year. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay. So, I, did everybody besides me get that? Sorry. I didn't know if everybody answered. So, that's clarifying for me.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions or comments?
Nope. I think that, you know, Galen and Violet, that sort of echoed some of my concerns. If we were going to have a discussion overall about safety and the schools, I'd like to consider SRO and, you know, additional police officers, I know Ken offered that up at the public meeting and it didn't really get a response.
I believe, I believe that's happening.
Yeah. We're getting one.
Yes, yes.
But we've seen that if it's something we're really concerned about, we could potentially talk about, you know, one of these schools, if we're going to talk about where we're spending money. But that's a different discussion. I'm not going to lead us down a different route.
Okay, thank you.
So, I think that will just ease us from this discussion now.
Thank you.
I just, I need a clarifying question on the SRO discussion. I'm not quite sure, Galen, I'm sorry, maybe you didn't bring up the SRO. Did you, did you mention that?
No.
Violet, I'm sorry.
She made the good point. I just blathered.
Yeah. I just want to be clear, we pay for one now.
And then the town pays that?
And the town has, and I'm not sure where Stacy or Tom, I'm not sure where the town is in that process, but I know that Jack had approached the town about picking up the SRO for this school year coming up, and then it would be a company on the board event the following year. But I don't know why the SRO discussion is coming up. I just want to clarify.
I was referring to the SROs in terms of safety and prevention in light of what you had mentioned about the national tragedy.
Oh, okay.
In addition to, you know, we have the counseling staff, the social and the psychological staff in the different buildings. But the SRO, and clarify this one because I wondered, it's understanding that the high school and the junior high would have theirs on that, and Jeffrey would share one on that campus, and then the two Brown and Ryerson would have, is that, did I get that inaccurately?
You can look to me. Yes, I got all that.
Okay, thank you.
So, we have the officer that we employ, who largely is stationed at Hand, Paulson, Jeffrey campus.
That's the Board of Ed?
Yep, yep. And then we have the other officer who serves in a similar capacity, who services Ryerson, Brown and Island.
And does the town pay for that piece for the one year and then we pick up the cost in the future?
Since Sandy Hook, we have had a 70/30 split.
Oh, 70/30.
For the officer, hold on, there's two different dynamics here.
Okay.
So, for one officer that the Board of Ed is in contract with, there's a 70/30 split, we pay 70% of that salary for that officer. The other officer has been a police department initiative, rationale being that there's 3,000 students, 500 adults, it's a patrol essentially that they've assigned them to, and they have assigned that officer to our schools and may pick up the tab for that. My understanding is, the chief has asked the town to do that for one more year with the expectation the following year that if we wanted to keep a second officer, we'd do it.
And that following year is 218 to 219?
1920.
Oh, 1920.
Yeah, 1920. But the mission of ESS and the SROs...
No, no, I was just referring to, as it was mentioned about the tragedy. No, I understand completely the, and I think we're all in complete support of social-emotional well-being. I don't think that's even a question. It just comes down to, you know, how are we going to fund this after having the budget passed?
If there was mentioning too, that, and correct me if I'm wrong, but that Paulson is the only school that doesn't have an emotional well-being program at this point?
Well, I was, let me...
Well, not, right, not nothing, no.
Let me just, yeah, just for clarity. Effective School Solutions, this is our third year, correct, at the high school? So, we brought in a clinical responsive program for kids who are identified. Liz, I'm looking at you largely, if they're not already, a number of these kids have not all become identified for special education under the child find provision of the special law.
And general ad 504, some are situational and short-term.
Yeah, yeah, the short-term is fluid. We had set out to develop a K-12 spectrum of support, so we developed an in-house program, though ESS offers an elementary, we developed an in-house program, the acronym is PAL, P-A-L, at Jeffrey. When the oldest cohort, oldest fourth grade, when they moved to Brown, we extended that program up to Brown, and Julie is aware of that program now. So, we have that clinical support program, K to six, and we have ESS 912. This was a part of the board's budget assumption to include at one gap at the 78 at the upper middle school.
And as I said, I don't think there's a question about us, you know, not wanting to address that need.
So, if I could return to the cost-benefit angle, and I'm not prejudging anybody on council or putting anybody in the spot, we're making a request.
Right.
What happens if it doesn't go through? What are we, what as a board, what are we going to do?
That's the risk we're taking. What do you mean, doesn't go through, I'm sure?
If we make the request and it's denied.
Oh.
I'm not prejudging the outcome, not putting anybody in the spot, right? So, we, we're willing to risk no ESS for a year.
We don't have it right now.
Right, 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 right. So, the benefits will be there, it's just a potentially higher cost, is really what it comes down to.
Right.
So, I have a question on that, right? It's a good point. You know I'm big on process, right? I mean, we all said it, but I mean, geez, I mean, I'm like the process king here. So, like, this is really near and dear to my heart, and I really, I have issues with reopening the budget, right? We talked about this a little bit. I mean, to Violet's point about if we cut somewhere so we could fund ESS, you'd have to, I'm just addressing that.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to stick to the motion.
Understood. I'm debating with what she's saying, right? We'd have to reopen the process to do that. The problem I have with that is, other than the fact that nobody wants to do it, the problem I have with that is, there's nothing that the chair just laid out in terms of the new factors that are now before the board that would predicate a need to do that, right? So, in other words, if you cut something so you could fund ESS, it doesn't matter that we're getting, the town is getting money from OLM. It doesn't matter that we have, you know, some amount in the, in the undesignated fund. It doesn't matter that, you know, this, this recent tragedy occurred, which to your point, I mean, you know, it's current news and not that, that makes it right. But my point is, none of the things that, that was said in the motion in terms of the new information, none of that is relevant, right? So, in trying to keep it relevant to the motion, I kind of think, well, I don't see how cutting something in order to fund this makes use of the, like, to me, that's not the reason we're here. We're here because there's new information and how do we deal with that? That's the only way I can get around a one-time deviation from the process if we can address what changed since God voted on it.
And I just want to add, I didn't realize that it would break, be breaking the protocol doing that. Because, as I said, I've never gone through a budget process before, and I am also misprocedure and misprotocol. So, I don't want to set a precedent. I, you know, I, I'm here like everyone else and I'm sort of following your process and this being my first one. So, if it means, you know, breaking protocol, no. I just thought that would be an option if, if it is something that could be done, given the budget that we agreed on.
Sure.
But if it can't be, I completely understand. It was, it was a proposal.
No, I get it.
But thanks for clarifying, because I didn't know that you'd have to open it to do it.
Sorry, but I do have a question.
Can I just speak for a second? I don't think you do have to reopen it. What would need to happen if, I think, I'm like 80% sure, is that the board would have to vote as a board on a line item and make a line item transfer. I think that's how that would work, but I think, again, that's kind of a moot point anyway because that was not what was proposed in the motion. The money that is coming is from this year's budget, it's not from next year's budget.
Correct.
So, just one clarifying question then. If we're asking for that fund, 120K from the undesignated fund balance, right, so the 2.08 effectively goes up to some number, and then at the end of the year theoretically we would give it back, right, to bring it back down.
Right.
How do we know that that will occur? How do we know that we're going to have any funds remaining to get back?
So, Stacy, we did an average of what we've...
Turnover the last three years was about 270,000. We don't know. There's no guarantee we're going to have this information at the end of 17, 18. There's a lot of unknowns. One big one is Special F. It's just a big unknown.
And typically, Matt, in March, probably early April.
Early April.
Probably more like early April, we start internally to look for that last quarter of the fiscal year, kind of where we are, and then the Finance Committee meeting usually in April to kind of say, you know, where, if February is early for us to be doing those projections, to, you know, go on a limb because things can change. Right now, we are in a deficit in special education. It's a larger one than I've seen in my six years, but that, those things can change instantly. You know, a student that we're serving could move out of town, a new student could move in. You know, it can swing either way. So, human resources with medical leaves and so forth, special education, those are really hard to pin down until really late in the fiscal year.
Okay.
And that is the reason for the Special Life Reserve Fund that was founded before, on the town side, before I came here.
Thanks, Tom. This is Seth speaking. I'm big on process and I think one of the things that brings us to this unfortunate moment where we'd all like to hope that anything we vote on tonight would be a one-off and not be very common for this board or any board in town, and that we're not flip-flopping all the time. One guarantee to make sure that that doesn't happen is to make sure that the process all along the way that leads to the budget or that leads to that final product is as open and as proper as possible. So, you know, I absolutely agree with the folks who are process-oriented in stating that that's a reason that they may not want to vote in favor of this motion tonight. However, I would point out that this budget cycle, for whatever reason, and I will totally allow for the purposes of this discussion, that it was maybe through nobody's fault, it was just happenstance. You know, I know we missed one meeting because there was going to be bad weather, so that was an opportunity to discuss this on the record somewhere. We missed another opportunity to do what we have done in almost every year, if not every year, since I've been on the board, which is to give the superintendent an opportunity when we're looking to cut something to say, hey, here's what we're thinking you can maybe cut, but you take a look at it, we'll cut elsewhere if you think it makes more sense or if this is important to you, or if this is important to the district for some specific reason. We didn't do that this time around. The offer was there from the, from the superintendent. And, you know, I, I think we find ourselves in this situation because of almost a comedy of errors, you could say, that led us to a budget vote that a lot of board members were not satisfied with because, partly because of the process. Again, not blaming anyone, but the fact is, the whole thing is fruit of the poisonous tree. And if you want to talk about process, we need to throw it all out, and I think we owe ourselves the recognition that this probably will be a one-off situation and, you know, you know, we probably are not going to be changing course on budget votes so long as we follow process in the future, and we're all on record now talking about how we'll do that. This is Galen. I'd like to go...
Okay, I have to jump. I'm just going to say that I cried sort of foul on most of that statement because I went through a very detailed timeline of the entire budget process, and I have emails and texts from all of you. You can say a lot of numbers were not pleased, but the majority of the numbers voted for it. So, with that, I'm just going to go.
Well, I'd like to...
Thank you for calling in.
I, for the record, I'd like to state that we can certainly learn, but that I think, I'd like to emphasize it's a very unusual budget process. We had a failed referendum, we had turnover, we had a very difficult calendar, election, all kinds of things, all right? And I think people acted with integrity, did the best they could. I really do. And so, that's, that's my statement on that.
Yes.
Can I add? Hello?
Hi, Greg.
How's it going? So, mostly an outsider perspective on this so far, this is officially day one for me, I guess. So, observing this from the back of the room, mostly at a number of meetings, one thing that has struck me about this is that I agree that there are process concerns about this in general. Like, this is not ideal. This is not how we want to approach this. This is not probably how, as a board, we want to proceed in general. But the thing that sticks with me, and I think, you know, there's no, no need to debate whether or not we want to make sure that we're doing something that's good for students, like we all do, obviously. But this is largely for me, financial. I think about this from the perspective of what I've heard over the last few months about costs that have been rising in terms of special services, in terms of the allocation that's been decreasing because of unexpected costs in that area. And I think that, I think about this two ways. If I went out to talk to a parent or just somebody in the town about this, I think they'd probably less want to hear about procedure, even though I, as a procedure nerd, I guess, would, would have issues with it if I heard about it. would, would have issues with it if I heard about it. And I think they'd probably more want to hear about the fact that for a relatively small amount of money, we can do something that if there's even one outplacement, would be budget neutral. And we'll never know if that will happen. We'll never know if this will prevent an outplacement, but what if it prevents one or two or three or four? Those costs are astronomical and only rising. And my concern is that if we don't take the opportunity to maybe adjust a bit from where the board originally voted, which I was not there for, but if we took that opportunity, there's not, there's a chance that we would be fiscally preventing something from being worse next year. And so that's my main focus here.
Are you still with us?
Yes.
I, I just want to make, you're in Mexico, so I wanted to make sure we gave you the opportunity to speak.
No, I appreciate that. I, listening along, I echo, second everything that Greg said.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's it.
Okay. Don't hang up.
I won't hang up. Don't worry.
So, yes.
I do have something else that I'd like to say real quick. And I think the connection to the national tragedy, that, you know, the Parkland shootings, that shooting that just occurred, it, to me, it's not the sole focus or the sole reason for this. But it is ample evidence that reminds us of the same thing, that everything from Columbine onward reminds us, and the fact that we have a shooting every third day in a school since the beginning of this year. The most important thing to me is that, you know, we're not looking to ESS to provide prevention of this exact thing happening because Parkland just happened. We're looking to expand ESS to Paulson because, and it's not only a support system for kids who see it on the news and they get freaked out. I mean, those things are certainly both true as well. But the real purpose and the real, the real benefit of this program to our school system and where it would be especially helpful in middle school, because those are very tumultuous years, is in providing advanced clinical care to socially and emotionally troubled children and children at risk when they need it most and to help keep them comfortable so that they don't feel alienated at school. And by doing these things, you have a by-product benefit of keeping, keeping our chances of something like this tragic event from happening here. We all say it could never happen in, you know, in our district, couldn't happen in this town, and it's always those towns where it happens. I would argue that's because the makeup of the students and the makeup of the, of the town, there's more to lose for a kid who gets alienated than there is in a town where all the kids are alienated. And so it's incumbent on us, I think, as a board, to recognize that, you know, the true value of this is not in responding to Parkland or to Columbine or to Sandy Hook. It's in preventing one of those from happening by reaching our children when we can do the most good and providing them with the tools to cope and the tools to, to fit in so that they don't become the next Atalanta. And so to me, the, the added fact of the national tragedy that just happened is just a reminder of how important a program like this is. It's not, you know, the impetus for asking for the money. It's just one more bit of evidence as to why the money is so important.
I have just have a clarifying question and then a request. So what happens if at the end of the school year, we don't have 120,000 to be replenished? So that'll be my first question. I'll wait for the answer and then I'll say my request. Wait, that's service fourteen. Is it in the motion that way? Okay, can you reread it just because it was like, none of us has seen it before? Thanks.
Sure. I hear, and everybody will get a copy too. I hereby move that the Board of Education requests that the Town of Madison's Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen create and commit to an assignment of $120,000 from the undesignated fund balance, which amount shall be assigned to the Board of Education for the purpose of funding during the 2018-2019 budget year of the Effective School Solutions Program, providing the Board of Education first utilize unspent funds at the end of fiscal year 2017-2018 to return the same amount to the town. I further move to authorize the Board Chair in conjunction with the Superintendent of Schools and/or the Director of Special Education to draft and to submit such a request to the Board of Finance and Selectmen specifying therein the purpose and parameters of this proposed appropriation.
So Jessica, going back to your question.
You have to send your other request. The request was to reread.
Oh. So what if there are no surplus of funds at the end of the year? What happens? We won't.
It's a compromise and a risk that, given the, you know, average of, we're, we're hoping that there will be, but we recognize that if we don't have the money, that happens.
Now, there's nothing stopping the Board of Ed from, at some point down the road, if it looks like we're not going to have surplus funds to be able to cover that amount, nothing's stopping us from making a motion at that time to ask the other boards for a special appropriation in that amount. It's a different vehicle.
Or a portion of it.
Or a portion of it. Yeah, if we can only refund, you know, 70,000 of it, for example, maybe the difference, we could ask for it. So I would point that out, that, you know-
Stay under the 1% though, Greg.
Yes. Did I just say?
There's a statute-
State statute.
That allows Boards of Ed to reserve 1% of the current fiscal year's budget and the town can reserve it to carry into the next year, 1%. Now, for our purposes, round numbers, 1% would be about $560,000. We already do a little over 300,000 for plan and cycle maintenance. And for this year, we have already worked with the town for $270,000 of returned funds to begin the remodeling through furniture project of the elementary schools. So staying at that 1% is credible. If I could just say one thing too. I know Liz and I talked, just from our purposes, from the Advent team, our request had nothing to do with Parkland or anything like that. This was in the budget assumptions from October. So for new board members, this is not something new that popped up. It was even before Matt and Violet and Emily were on the board. This is something that the board investigated at the outset and was written into and formally adopted by the board before the budget season even began, which Greg will be a whole education for you to go through that process. So I just want to make that clear, that Liz and I had talked about this specifically because of that K-12 continuum that we hope to provide. So that's really the origin of this. I'm sure things can amplify it over time with, as Galen pointed out, you know, we had a packed room, you know, December 14th of 2012 after Sandy Hook, and it was responsive as there, but this program in particular was not lived any one incident.
It was based on the success of it at the high school.
Which the board got a report on December 19th with, you know, objective data but also anecdotal information on that. And again, I don't think anyone here or before has questioned that.
Right. Right. I, that's, that's absolutely true. And, I mean, there's just the inconvenient budget vote on January 3rd. Right?
Are we prepared to take a vote? Any other questions? Comments? So do you want me to read the motion again?
Yes.
Yes, correct. I hereby, blah, without my glasses. I hereby move that the Board of Education requests that the Town of Madison's Board of Finance and Board of Selectmen create and commit to an assigned, I'm sorry, to an assignment of $120,000 from the undesignated fund balance, which amount shall be assigned to the Board of Education for the purpose of funding during the 2018-2019 budget year, the Effective School Solutions Program, providing the Board of Education first utilize unspent funds at the, at the end of the fiscal year 2017-2018 to return the same amount, $120,000, to the town. I further move to authorize the Board Chair in conjunction with the Superintendent of Schools and/or the Director of Special Education to draft and to submit such requests to the Board of Finance and Selectmen specifying therein the purpose and parameters of this proposed appropriation. All those in favor?
Emily, your vote?
Emily?
Yes, I-
All those opposed? Abstentions?
I'm, I'm sorry. I have to do it. You want, okay. I'm just, I'm in charge of this tonight.
Thank you. Motion passes. Thank you, everybody, for being here.
Thank you.
We're out and closing.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to, oh, thank you.
Second.
All those in favor?
I thought-
All those opposed? I'm saying, thank you, everybody. So you-
I'm sorry.